Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,199th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on requests for preliminary platts and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition is requesting a waiver of use or a site plan and is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to the City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Denaro.
Present.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Karen Magno is here. Chairman Wolschow. Is here. And also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. For the folks in our audience, the way that we operate the meeting is we'll call each of the items that are on our agenda. Our planning staff will give background information about the petition, and then we'll have the petitioner come forward to speak to their petition and answer some questions that we may have for them. And then anyone else in the audience wishing to address any of these petitions will be given an opportunity to also come forward and speak for or against the petition. So with that, and then of course, we'll make our decision after we hear from everybody. So with that, we're going to start on the public hearing section of our agenda, item number one.
Petition 2023-04-01-02 submitted by FGN Holdings pursuant to Sections 13.13 and 13.15 of the Livonia Vision 21. Zoning ordinance is amended. Requesting to rezone the properties at 19380 and 19384 Newburgh Road located on the east side of Newburgh Road between Seven Mile Road and St. Martins Avenue in the southwest quarter of Section 5 from Rural Urban Farm to N1 Neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you. As indicated, this is a rezoning petition involving two parcels which are located on Newburgh Road. The property is on the east side of the road, north of Seven Mile Road. The zoning change would be from RUF Rural Urban Farm to N1 Neighborhood. The north parcel, which is 19384 Newburgh, measures 50 feet in width by 202 feet and is currently vacant. The south parcel, 19380 Newburgh, measures 186 feet in width by 202 feet and contains a vacant residential house as well as a detached garage. Together, the site measures 236 feet by 202 feet for a total area of 47,778 square feet, which is just over one acre in size. The current RUF district requires a minimum lot width of 75 feet and a minimum lot area of 15,000 square feet. The N1 Neighborhood District, which is proposed, requires a minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet and minimum lot dimensions of 50 feet and 120 feet. The site would be divided into four equal parts. Each lot measures 59 feet by 202 feet for a total area of 11,945 square feet, which is approximately twice the minimum land area requirement for the N1 zoning district. The existing house and garage are in disrepair and would be removed. The subject's site is surrounded by residential properties. To the north are single-family homes which are on St. Martins within the Willowood subdivision. This area is zoned N2. To the east are single-family homes on Augusta within the Fox Creek Meadows subdivision, also zoned N2. And to the south are residential lots along Newburgh Road zoned RUF. And then west across Newburgh Road, our residential properties also zoned RUF. The future land use map designates the subject property as low-density residential. This corresponds to a density of between 1 to 5 dwelling units per acre and a minimum lot area of 7,200 square feet and a minimum lot width of 60 feet. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I can read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
We have a letter from our Engineering Department dated April 17th that reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed rezoning at this time. The subject parcels are assigned the addresses of 19380 and 19384 Newburgh Road. The existing parcel is currently served by Public Water Main and Sanitary Sewer. Water Main is located on the east side of Newburgh Road while the sanitary sewer is located on the west side and will require new crossings for the proposed parcels or extend the existing main located to the south of the properties. There is no public storm sewer available to the proposed parcels. Although there is an open drain to the north of Parcel D, the developer will need to investigate options for the parcels to accommodate the required sump pump drainage, including placing a rear yard storm system in aneasement to service all four parcels." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next letter is dated April 17th, and it's from the Department of Finance, and it reads, "I have reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. The following amounts are due to the City of Livonia: unpaid water and sewer charges in the amount of $796.42." And that letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer dated April 19th and signed by Linda Sheel, Treasurer of the City. And then lastly, we have a letter from our Assessment Department signed by Kathy Siderlet. It's dated April 17th wherein they indicate that buildings would need to be demolished in order to facilitate the future divisions into four parcels, and that is the extent of the correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Do we have any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions. Our petitioner, I believe, is in our audience tonight. Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Toramina, in reading the notes that you provided to us tonight, I see that the statement, part of the statement says, "Or the approving resolution below could be changed from N1 to N2." So if there is an approving resolution offered stating, making the change to N2, that can be done right here at the table.
Yes, the Planning Commission has the ability under a situation like this to modify the zoning classification to something that is less intense. You could not do the same on the opposite end. So you couldn't redirect an approving resolution to a more intense land use classification.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Ventura. Good question. Any other questions for our planning staff? I don't see anything else. Our petitioner, I believe, is in the audience. Please feel free to come forward to our podium. Well, I ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Louis Yaldo, and I own both of the property on Newburgh. And I have Frank Kildus, my real estate. He's going to tell you all about it.
Develop it with the lots.
Okay. Good evening. And what else would you like to tell us about your proposal?
I'd like to put four independent residential properties on there. Houses could range anywhere from 1,500 square feet up to 2,400, 2,500 square feet. Most houses would be anywhere from about 41 feet wide to almost 45 feet wide. We'll probably push the houses back so they're not right off the main road, go at least about 30, 40 feet deep on the driveways. At least put a reverse pad on there so people can gun in and get out. At least improve the area instead of, you know, the current house that's on there right now.
Okay. And one thing I do want to point out, both for our audience members' benefits and also just as a reminder to all of the Commission, is that we are looking at a rezoning request at this time. So most of the focus is going to be on the zoning change that you're requesting. We're not going to probably get too detailed about the actual construction of the houses, what they're going to look like, materials, things like that, because that's a process that happens after zoning. So right now, the main focus is, is this zoning change appropriate or not? So with that, is there any questions for our petitioner, from any of our commissioners?
I have a question.
Mr. Bonjero.
Mr. Chair. It might go back to Mark. Do you know the width of those proposed houses? Is that what you're proposing right there?
Yeah. So which one did he use? So that one right there is a Hampton model. That one's going to be 43 feet wide.
Are you open to the idea of trying to go to an N2 versus the N1?
Yeah, I am. I looked at the whole entire parcel. So if I take the measurements, and I know because last time when we spoke, there was a concern of everything that's heading south on there, and then the other houses directly south of Louis' house, and then the other two vacant parcels. All the road frontage from start to finish, they add up to 647 feet. If we do end up going to N2, and then they get to approve, we could fit nine specific lots at 71.88 road frontage per lot. So everything would be equal from start to finish, which means for the current property that he owns, I'd be able to fit three houses at 71.88, which total 215.64, and I'd have an additional strip of 20.36 until the owner of the one that's south decides to sell, whether it's to us if we negotiate a price, to anybody else, and whoever buys it, developer, would have to pick up the 20 feet, 20.36, that Louis owned in order to finish everything equally, nine lots total.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
So to the petitioner, the property's to the south. Are you actively looking at that property now, and is there any movement on that, or is it just against the wall right now?
We made an offer to her. She haven't been with the answer.
So you made an offer in the last week or last month?
Yesterday.
Okay, so recently.
Yeah.
Okay. And so if she accepts, if you come to an agreement, you'll get nine lots there, all approximately 72 feet wide?
Yes.
They'll all be Newburgh Road entry?
Yes.
Garage is?
It's not deep enough to actually put a road in to go in to make like where all the houses face, the back of the houses to face off Newburgh Road. They'll be all front entry off of Newburgh Road. I'm sorry, you were going to ask a question about the garage, I believe?
Yeah, they'll all be garage facing Newburgh Road?
Yes.
No side entry? Won't have room for that?
With 71.88, we have different models that we could do side entry garages.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other.
Chairman, I guess I would ask the petitioner. Mr. Yaldo, you're on the agenda tonight, and we could take a vote on your petition. However, we could table your petition tonight and give you time to work out the possibility of acquiring the land to the south. What would you prefer?
I will table it.
You would prefer to table it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions from any of our commissioners? I think we've exhausted the questions up here. Let's just see if there's anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this petition, and then we'll have you guys come up right at the end for any last comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this zoning petition? If so, feel free to come forward. Feel free to come forward, sir.
My name is Barry Good. I am the first property owner going into St. Martins.
Okay.
My property is 108 wide, and then I bought the woods behind it. So I've got, you know, 57 yards and 177 yards. Got a deep property there. The homes that we're talking about in this area are anywhere from 300,000 to over 500,000, 4,000 square feet homes, you know, finished basements, all that stuff like that. To put right behind my house, butting my property, 1,400-foot homes, the devaluation that we're talking about as far as the value of our property is going to be impacted. So I'm happy to hear that Louis wants to table it, move it down to where he can get more property and go to the 70-some feet, the 79 feet that he was talking about. I don't understand how you guys, when we have a code or thing that says 75 minimum, we can even entertain going down to 49 feet wide. That's a huge drop. This is not a low-income area. So I have a problem with that. I have a problem with the devaluation of the property, a lot of other minor issues, but that's pretty much it. Did you have? Did I cover?
No, I think you did. We live in the house right next door.
Right next to me.
Go ahead and come forward.
There's three of us. Don't like concern. You've got an area where...
Introduce yourself, please.
Just wanted to know who we're talking to.
Oh, I'm Mike. Mike Miller. How are you?
Okay. Good, good. Nice to meet you. What's your address, sir?
37...
37353.
37353.
Okay.
The biggest concern is what we're talking about. You've got all these big houses, and if you put in four 1,500, 1,400 square foot houses, it doesn't even fit the area. I mean, I understand it's a great lot. Somebody wants to put a 4,000 square foot house on it, makes all the sense in the world. But putting in a bunch of dingy little houses, nobody's going to want that. And as I said, it affects everybody financially. So I think we need to consider that before anything gets moved ahead with that.
Yeah, that 236 foot, if be divided into three parcels, that takes us to 78.6. That gets you where you want. We could live with that, you know? But it's putting four in that little area of 47, that doesn't get it to help us with the value of our homes.
Okay.
Okay?
I think we understand what you want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Is there anyone else in our audience wishing to speak for or against this petition?
Say whatever you want.
If there's no one else in the audience wishing to speak on this petition, does our petitioner have anything else they'd want to say before we make our decision? Mr. Yaldo? Are you all set?
No, we're all set.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. If there's no other comments, I can close the public hearing at this time. I will go to the Commission for a motion. The motion's in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I'm going to offer a motion to table this item for a set period of time to be determined by the Planning Commission or by the Planning Department, so that Mr. Yaldo can further explore the opportunity to purchase land to the south and bring this back with a plan with larger lots.
Okay. And Mr. Toramina, are we looking to do a date uncertain, or do you have a set date that...
June 13th.
June 13th would be the next appropriate meeting? So, Mr. Ventura, you're okay with the June 13th?
I am, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And is there support for that tabling motion?
Support.
We have a motion to table by Mr. Ventura to the date of June 13th, supported by Mr. Bonjero. There is no discussion on tabling motions. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura. Aye. Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Denaro.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Karen Magno votes aye. Chairman Wolschow.
Votes aye. Motion passes. The item has been tabled to June 13th. Anyone interested in this item, you can come back on that day, and we'll continue this item. Thank you for coming this evening. And now we move on to item number two on the public hearing section of our agenda.
That is petition 2023-03-02-02 submitted by YoYo Spa One LLC, requesting waiver use approval under Section 6.37 of the Livonia Vision 21. Zoning ordinance is amended to operate a massage establishment at 33316 Plymouth Road located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Mayfield and Farmington Road in the southwest quarter of Section 27.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you. This is a waiver use petition involving a massage establishment called YoYo Spa. It would be located within the Fountain Park Commercial Development. This is a planned general development located at the northeast corner of Plymouth and Farmington Roads. And as a PGD or Planned General Development, this was a combination of both residential as well as commercial construction. There are the condominium complexes, 10 buildings with about 142 units, and then there are five commercial buildings, including a Dollar Tree, which is the former Walgreens right at the corner, as well as a multi-tenant retail building, which is where the spa would be located, and then two full-service, excuse me, branch banks. The massage establishment would be located within the multi-tenant retail building, which is about 12,600 square feet in size. There are seven tenant spaces. The unit that YoYo Spa would occupy is roughly 1,000 square feet in size. This is located towards the east half of the building. It's between the Check Smart and the Lighthouse Smoke Shop. The petitioner has submitted a floor layout which shows the interior layout. It includes, as you would expect, a waiting area, reception office, as well as several individual massage rooms. There's also an employee lunchroom, a storage area, and a restroom. Section 6.37 of the zoning ordinance does have some special requirements that apply to massage establishments. The first is that it must be separated by at least 400 feet from any other massage establishment, as well as a 400-foot separation requirement from any school, place of worship, state-licensed daycare facility, public library, playground, or public park. Secondly, the operating hours are limited from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. In this case, there are no other massage establishments within 400 feet of the proposed YoYo Spa. However, the location does not meet the 400-foot separation requirement from a licensed childcare facility or public park. The Learning Tree Childcare Center is directly across Plymouth Road, about 122 feet from the subject property, and as well as Sheldon Park and the Alfred Noble Library, which are about 277 feet away. So this will require special approval by City Council. There are no other building or site modifications planned. They'd be allowed one wall sign based on the unit's frontage, and the existing parking at the shopping complex is sufficient to handle the traffic for the proposed spa. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
First letter comes from the Engineering Division, and it is dated April 4th, where they indicate that the existing parcel is currently served by Public Sanitary Sewer, Water Main, and Storm Sewer. Per the submitted drawings, there are no planned alterations to the services, so they do not expect any impacts to the existing systems at this time. And it should be noted that any disturbances within the Plymouth Road right-of-way would require the owner to obtain permits from the Michigan Department of Transportation. And that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter coming from the Fire Marshal dated April 23rd wherein he indicates there he has no objections to the plans at this time. Also, a letter of no objection, excuse me, coming from the Division of Police dated April 4th and signed by Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. A letter from our Inspection Department dated April 21st and signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. Mr. Hanna indicates that the property is closer than 400 feet to a childcare facility and park, so council must waive the 400-foot requirement in order for this to be approved. We also have a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance dated May 1st and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer dated April 11th and signed by Linda Sheel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions for our planning staff. I believe the petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward to our podium and introduce yourselves.
Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Shiri Liu again. I was here like a couple weeks ago. This is Xiaoping. She's the manager of the existing right now is New Elik Food and Body Massage, which is also in Plymouth Road 34389. So this place, the doctor's office that, as I explained last time, is divided by three rooms but without doors, so we have admitted the doors, totally no doors. And for, we understand that is the library is 277 feet. However, that library, I think during the pandemic has been completely closed. And so hopefully, that will be have some consideration. And we have a lot of customers for the existing, the massage place where we provide the Chinese traditional massage and then also Chinese of physical therapy. And for this new place, what we are planning to do is including myself and Xiaoping would be the manager, operating both the buildings. And we will, at least to the city of Livonia, we will create another at least six to eight position, work position for the people and will benefit for the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Liu.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for our petitioner?
I have a question.
Ms. Denaro.
Ms. Liu, do you already have a massage location, or is this a brand-new business?
We do have one that is in 34389 Plymouth Road. It's the same street in Plymouth Road, yes. It's been operated really well, and we want to expand just because of high demand. We have a lot of customers from Canton, Westland, and also from Farmington Hills. And with existing capacity, it cannot be fit all those people. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denaro. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
I've got a couple of questions. How busy is your other spa at the 34,000 address? How many days a week is it open? How busy is it?
Right now, so far, we have to open every day, and then it's only got three rooms in there. And then if the people come in, like extra number four people, because each one would take about 45 minutes to an hour, and then we have to have the people to come back. So the busy, really busy traffic, we have about, like, right now, the business with, we have about very good revenue coming in, and each day is at least 2,000 through 3.
Why do people travel so far to come to your establishment? You said Canton and Farmington Hills. Seems to be a lot of massage establishments around in most communities. Why would they come so far to come here?
Because we also do foot massage, and nobody else should do that.
You do foot massages?
Yes. A lot of people, including one, is the former of the professor in University of Eastern University, a professor. He has a cancer, so he's the one that will always come to Xiaoping and his place because he may have like eight to nine months, but then, you know, he lives in Canton. So he's the one that calling me every time and say, "I want to go to Xiaoping because they have a very good foot massage, and I can't even walk." So for those people, they have the professional help from the medical doctor, however, certain thing that they feel to comfort, to make them feel relaxed and better. So foot massage is not like easy for everyone, because nobody wants to do it, to be honest with you, but they take that as a very specialty for this location.
Okay. And the last question is, you know, you're going to put people to work, six, seven, eight people, I think you said.
Six, at least we will hire six to seven, six to eight people in this new place, because we have to rotate the ship. Because basically, we open from 11 o'clock to 7:00 at night.
Now, the people that work for you, the technicians, what their title is, I don't know, but will they live in the city of Livonia? Where do the employees come from?
Right now, they live in Canton. We have the special accommodation for them, that in Canton condo. But then, like I mentioned last time, the people that might be from New York because they more experienced, but they're the one who's going to be here to train Livonia people. We try to hire people that live in Livonia or around that, you know, that area. So if they live in Livonia, so they have their own home, either no matter it's condo or house or apartment, so they're local people. We want to hire local people to work here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions for our petitioner from any of our commissioners. Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anybody in our audience jumping forward. We have one gentleman who is going to come forward.
Go on, hey.
We'll let him speak, and then we'll give you another chance. Thank you. We'll let him speak, and then we'll give you another chance. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, sir. I live at eleven-seven-four-one-eleven-seven-one-four Farmington Road. So, I live right behind there.
Oh, okay.
My biggest concern is a lot of the traffic there. I mean, we have stop signs get ran all the time. We have, there's no place to park. If I have somebody over at my house, or my condo, I have no place, no place to, they're in parking areas and walk across the street to get to my house. A lot of, lot of issues there. Second mile, when the last pop-up was open, there was a lot of fire lanes blocked, so if ambulance had to get up, or fire trucks had to get up, and nobody was there to be concerned about it.
Okay.
I had a Fourth of July weekend one time, and big dumpster full of rotted food, rats. It wasn't very pleasurable. So, I'm trying to cook my Fourth of July barbecue, and I'm staring at a dumpster full of rotted food.
Hmm, okay.
So, but my biggest concern is the traffic, and nobody wants to control it. There's no control from the city council, the ordinance, Planning Commission. I mean, if they want to open a business, I don't, I don't care, but I mean, where their employees going to park?
Okay. I appreciate your concerns. Can we get your name just?
Sure, it's Chuck.
Chuck, okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else in our audience wishing to add anything to this item, for or against? Ms. Liu, is there anything else that you or Xiaoping would like to add before we make our decision? Please come forward, so our microphone can pick you up.
Yeah, she just wanted me to say that she been in the same, same location, not the same, I mean, same street of the, as I mentioned earlier, that she's managing right now, since two thousand fourteen.
Okay, that's the other location on Plymouth Road?
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I appreciate that comment. If there's no other comments or questions from any of our commissioners, I don't see anything else, we'll make our decision just momentarily. Just hold on one moment, and we'll make our decision. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Well, I'll close the public hearing on this item, and a motion is in order. Mr. Bongero.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. This request to operate a massage establishment at three-three-three-one-six Plymouth Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval, in the following conditions. One, the use of a massage establishment at this location is allowed, provided city council waives the requirement under section six point three-seven-three, and no massage establishment shall be located within four hundred feet of a daycare facility and park. The massage treatment room shall not have doors, as shown on the floor plan submitted May third, two thousand twenty-three. This waiver is limited to this petitioner and can only be transferred to another user within, with approval by the city council. Number four, the petitioner shall comply with all other special waiver use standards and requirements outlined in section six point three-seven of the zoning ordinance, and chapter five point four-nine of the Livonia Code of Ordinances. And, five, the petitioner shall not engage in any form solicitation for business within the public right-of-way of Plymouth Road.
Thank you, Mr. Bongero. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Bongero, supported by Ms. De Naro, for an approving motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Bongero.
Aye.
Mrs. De Naro.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
No.
Caremagna says no. Chair Wolschau.
The vote's no, and it's a three-three split. Motion fails for lack of support. Is there another motion? Many of our commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
Offered a denying resolution. This request to operate a massage establishment at three-three-three-one-six Plymouth Road is denied for the following reasons. Number one, the petitioner has failed to comply with the general standards and requirements outlined in sections one dot oh-two and thirteen dot one-three of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance. Number two, the proposed use fails to comply with the zoning ordinance standard outlined in section six dot three-seven parentheses three, which specifies that no massage establishment shall be located within four hundred feet of a daycare facility and park. Number three, the petitioner has not adequately established the need for the proposed use in the shopping center or the immediate area. Number four, the petitioner has not sufficiently demonstrated that the proposed use would be compatible with and in harmony with the surrounding uses in the area. And number five, that the proposed use is contrary to the goals and objectives of the zoning ordinance, which among other things, are intended to ensure the suitability and appropriateness of uses.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, let's see here. This is a motion to deny by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Caremagna. Is there any discussion on that motion? If there's no discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Caremagna votes aye. Mrs. De Naro.
No.
Mr. Bongero.
No.
Mr. Long.
Um, aye.
Chair Wolschau.
Votes aye. The motion to deny has been passed. The petitioner will have ten days in which to appeal this decision in writing to city council. If you need any additional information about that, you can contact, I believe, the planning staff. They'll help you with that process. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And that means we now move on to item three in our agenda.
Petition two zero two-three dash zero four dash zero two dash zero three, submitted by Wade Shows, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section three point one-one and six point five-six of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, as amended to conduct a carnival in the parking lot of the former Sears, sponsored by, by the Livonia AM Rotary Club, consisting of amusement rides, games, and food concessions from July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, through July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, on property at two-nine-five-zero-zero, Seven Mile Road, located on northwest corner of Seven Mile Road and Middle Belt Roads in the southeast quarter of section two.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. This year's Livonia AM Rotary Club Carnival would be held from, as indicated, July thirteenth through July twenty-third. The hours of operation are as follows: Monday through Friday, four to eleven PM, and then on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, from twelve PM to eleven PM. On Monday, July twenty-fourth, is when the carnival would be closed and dismantled. The carnival area is the same as it has been in the, for the past several years. It measures approximately six hundred and sixty feet in an east-to-west direction, by about three hundred and twenty feet in a north-to-south direction. The north limit, as you can see, is, is the main drive out that extends across the Sears parking lot, or the former Sears parking lot, and provides ingress and egress from Middle Belt Road to Livonia Marketplace, so that, that road would still remain open. And as you can see, too, the carnival consists of two main components. The first being the actual carnival area, which is on the, which is in the southeast corner of the parking lot, and then the RV parking and storage area, which is in the southwest corner of the parking lot. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll read out the correspondence.
Sure.
A letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer, dated April nineteenth, and signed by Linda Shield. A letter of no objection coming from the Finance Department, dated April nineteenth, and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. A letter from the Inspection Department, dated April twenty-fourth, and signed by Jerome Hanna. It reads, "Permits and inspections will be required for this proposed carnival. A pre-event meeting will be required with the Director of Inspection, Fire Marshal, and the Public Emergency Manager prior to filing the required permits." Next is a letter coming from the Traffic Bureau, and signed by Paul Walters, Sergeant, dated April eighteenth, wherein he indicates he has no objections to the proposal. And a letter from the Fire Marshal, dated April twenty-third, that reads, "We have no objection to the proposal with the following stipulations. Number one, carnival rides and attractions must be inspected, certified, and stickered. That is current with the State of Michigan requirements for carnivals prior to inspections by this AHJ. Number two, all cooking operations must comply with the State of Michigan and NFPA codes. Suppression systems are required to be inspected and in compliance with the current codes, and tagged when compliance is met by a certified licensed service provider. Number three, certified fire extinguishers at every attraction and ride, and readily accessible for trained operators in the use of fire extinguishers. If the above requirements are not in place prior to AHJ inspection, operations of the carnival will not commence until full compliance with fire code is met. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official set." And that letter is signed by Brian Cuckla, Fire Marshal. And lastly, we have a letter coming from the Engineering Division, dated April eighteenth, that reads, "We have no objection to the proposed petition, although the following items should be noted. Number one, should the carnival have the need to occupy, or should any of the associated activities impact either of the Seven Mile Road or Middle Belt Road right-of-way, a permit from Wayne County will be required, as both roads are under their jurisdiction. Number two, all sanitary sewage from the site, recreational vehicles, or campers shall be disposed of properly. And number three, should the operators need to have water provided for their facilities, they should contact the City of Livonia Water Department to obtain the proper equipment, including a water meter and back, and backflow preventer." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer, and that is the extended correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. And I had to look up what AHJ means, and that means Authority Having Jurisdiction, I believe. So, if anybody was wondering. All right, thank you. Is there any questions for our planning staff? Other than acronym definitions?
Thank you.
If not, Ms. Hardesty is here. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
It's, it's good to see you guys. It's great to be back this year again. We were a little nervous there for a little bit, but we're back.
Well, welcome back. And what would you like to tell us about your carnival over here?
Same old, same old. The same things we've done in years past. It's been very successful, and nothing will change. It'll be the same, same amount of rides. We will, will not be in the road right-of-way. We know all about the permit process, and we take care of all of that. So, nothing new. Nothing new.
All right, sounds good. Any questions for our petitioner? This is, this is a good sign. No questions for you. Anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anybody else running forward to talk about the carnival. So, if there's no other comments or questions, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. This request to conduct a carnival sponsored by Livonia AM Rotary Club. In the parking lot of the former Sears at twenty-nine-five-hundred Seven Mile Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval, and the following conditions. Number one, the carnival shall be limited to July thirteenth through July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Number two, the carnival shall be confined to the areas illustrated on the plan received by the Planning Commission on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Number three, all rides, food concessions, booths, and other equipment and apparatus relating to the carnival operation shall be at least sixty feet from the right-of-way of Seven Mile and Middle Belt Roads. Number four, the temporary housing and storage of trucks and equipment associated with the carnival shall be in the property's southwest corner, as shown on the plan, no closer than sixty feet from the right-of-way of Seven Mile Road. Number five, the hours of operation shall be limited to Monday through Friday from four PM to eleven PM, and on Saturday and Sunday from twelve, from noon to eleven PM. And number six, permits and inspections are required. Wade Shows shall request a pre-event meeting with the Director of Inspection, Fire Marshal, and emergency preparedness. Subject to the preceding conditions, this petition is approved for the following reasons. Number one, the proposed use complies with all of the special and general waiver use standards and requirements outlined in section six point five-six and thirteen dot thirteen of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, as amended. Number two, the site can accommodate the proposed use. Number three, the carnival will not disrupt the normal traffic flow and circulation in the area, and will not impede access to neighboring properties. And number four, no reporting, city department objects to the proposed use.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion to approve made by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Bongero. Is there any questions on the motion? If not, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Bongero.
Aye.
Mrs. De Naro.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Caremagna votes aye. Chair Wolschau.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to city council with an approving recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Point of clarification, on that requested meeting that Wade Shows has to request, well, can I get some direction on who does that? Is that an onsite? Mark, is that an onsite?
I believe that will be.
With the, with the unit manager, maybe?
I'll clarify that with, with the Fire Marshal and with the Director of Inspection, so yes.
That, because I, I think so, too, because that makes sense to have them out there. But, yeah, if you could let me know, so I can make sure that that happens, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck.
Have a good night. Thanks.
You, too. All right, that concludes the public hearing section of our agenda. We now move on to miscellaneous items. Item number four.
Number four is petition two zero two-two dash one zero, one-two dash zero one dash zero-two, submitted by the Basilica of St. Mary, under sections one three point one-three and one three point one-five, the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, as amended, requesting to rezone the properties at eighteen thousand one hundred Merriman Road and thirty-three-zero-six-zero-zero Brookview, Brookview Drive, located on the east side of Merriman Road, between Mayville Drive and Seven Mile Road, in the northwest quarter of section eleven, from public lands to NM-three-I, neighborhood multifamily, maximum four stories.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina, the petitioner has requested to have this item remain on the table. Do we need, because it was tabled to this specific date, do we need to remove it and then just re-table it? Or can we keep it on the table from a procedural standpoint?
That's a good question. I think in the past, you removed and then...
I think to be on the safe side, let's...
Yeah, and then, correct.
Okay, the item is currently tabled. Is there someone willing to make a motion to remove this item from the table?
So moved.
All right, supported by?
Support.
Mr. Ventura. So, we have a motion to remove this item from the table by Long and Ventura. If there's no objection, I think we can show six to remove this item from the table. That allows us to now discuss this item. The petitioner has asked to have this item remain on the table to a date of July. July twenty-fifth is the, is the date? Okay. And historically, the commission always honors requests from petitioners to table their items. So, if there's no objection from any of our commissioners, someone is free to make a, a motion to table this item to the date of July twenty-fifth.
So moved.
Mr. Long is going to make that tabling motion, and it's going to be supported by?
Second.
Ms. De Naro. And we have Long and De Naro on the motion to table. There is no discussion on tabling motions. Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mrs. De Naro.
Aye.
Mr. Bongero.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Caremagna votes aye. Chair Wolschau.
Votes aye. Item has been re-tabled to July twenty-fifth. That now takes us to the last item on our agenda, number five.
That is petition two zero two-three dash zero four dash zero eight dash zero four, submitted by Hades Brothers Livonia LLC, on behalf of Dairy Queen, requesting approval of all plans required by sections three point one-one and one three point one-three of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, as amended, in connection with proposal to redevelop the site, including reconfiguring the parking lot and drive-through facilities, add an outdoor patio area, and remodel the interior and exterior of the restaurant, former Steak and Shake, at one-seven-two-zero-zero, Middle Belt Road, located on the east side of Middle Belt Road, north of Six Mile, in the southwest quarter of section twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. This is a request to modify, to renovate the former Steak and Shake Restaurant, as indicated on Middle Belt Road, just north of Six Mile Road. Steak and Shake received city approval back in nineteen ninety-nine. They remained in operation until two thousand and nineteen, when the restaurant closed. It's been vacant since then. The site is about three point one-nine acres, or three point nine acres in size. You'll notice that a large portion of the property borders the Terabusi Creek, and that area is designated as flood plain, and is zoned ROF, rural urban farm. But the building itself is located on a C-two or commercial zone portion of the property. The building is about thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred square feet in size. You'll see from the aerial photograph that there's part... You'll see from the aerial photograph that there's parking available on, uh, all four sides of the building with, uh, drive-through, uh, window service on the north side. Uh, the site does lie adjacent to a Walgreens Pharmacy, as well as a Gordon's Food Service. Uh, access is available via a two-way drive off of Middle Belt Road, and then there's also a shared driveway with the Walgreens, uh, to the south. Uh, Steak and Shake was approved with a total of ninety-nine customer seats. The proposed Dairy Queen would have ninety-eight seats. Sixty-four of those would be, uh, within the building, interior seats, and thirty-six would be patio seats. Uh, four parking spaces would be removed along the, uh, front of the building uh, to make room for the, uh, twenty-two foot by forty-seven foot, uh, outdoor patio. There would be a wrought iron fence, uh, provided around that, uh, patio seating area. Uh, the seating plan shows a total of nine tables. Uh, the landscaping is in, uh, very good, uh, condition. This is something that we discussed at the, uh, study session. Uh, this is actually the plan that shows some of the modifications. So this is an updated landscape plan. Uh, the petitioner, uh, noted from our discussion the last, uh, week or two weeks ago, uh, that the commission wanted to see some additional foundation planting, some additional shrubbery along, uh, Middle Belt Road, the main road, and then, uh, some plantings uh, in the island area created where the drive-up service, um, uh, stacking lane would be provided. And, and so those changes have been made to the plan. With respect to the drive-through, it's a little bit different arrangement than what Steak and Shake had. Steak and Shake, uh, uh, the, the drive-up operated, uh, for the most part directly behind the building. It would, it commenced on the, uh, the south side of the building and then wrapped around. Uh, what, uh, this plan shows is, um, extending that drive-through lane, uh, further to the east on the site, so they're creating, uh, this island area by removing roughly seventeen parking spaces uh, behind the building. And what this does is this increases the stacking, uh, distance of four vehicles, utilizing the drive-through lane. There's still, uh, a full bypass lane, uh, provided, as well as the ability, uh, for cars to access, um, to service, um, uh, the back of the store, uh, located here, so no problem with, uh, a loading area. The parking requirement is a total of thirty-two spaces, and this plan shows thirty-four spaces. So even with the elimination of the seventeen spaces, uh, the plan complies with the zoning regulations. In terms of the building itself, uh, there'd be some substantial changes, at least visually, uh, to the building. Uh, the brick would be painted. There's wing walls, uh, on all four corners of the buildings that would be, uh, removed. You can see the color scheme here is a combination of, of grays and, and reds and, uh, and others colors. Um, so painted brick, uh, some areas of EFS, as well as metal panels would be added, uh, to the building. The interior would be completely, uh, remodeled. Uh, signage, uh, the main sign on the front of the building complies with the ordinance. This revised plan shows an additional sign on the, uh, east side, or excuse me, the south side of the building. That too conforms with the new zoning regulations, which were adopted by the council, uh, just last night, uh, and also shown as a ground sign that would, uh, comply with the zoning regulations. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
We have a letter from the Engineering Department dated, uh, April seventeenth that reads, "The existing parcel is currently served by Public Sanitary Sewer and Water Main, as well as Private Storm Sewer. Per the submitted drawings, there are no planned alterations to the services, so we do not expect any impacts to the existing systems at this time. It should be noted that any disturbances within the Middle Belt Road right-of-way would require the owner to obtain permits from the Wayne County Department of Public Services." Now, a letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Letter from Livonia Fire and Rescue dated April twenty-third and signed by Brian Cuckla, Fire Marshal, that reads, "We have no objections to this proposal. If the sprinkler system and the fire alarm exist, it must be maintained and operational and provide plans and permits for hood and duct with suppression system. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." Next is a letter from the Division of Police, uh, Traffic, uh, Safety Bureau, uh, signed by Paul Walters and dated April fourteenth, indicating that they have no objections to the, uh, plans as submitted. From the Inspection Department, a letter dated April twenty-fourth that reads, "The parking lot shall be repaired and restripped as necessary. Parking spaces shall be ten feet wide by twenty feet deep and double striped. And two, the, the signage shall conform to the Livonia Vision zoning ordinance. Any excess signage would require variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This department has no further objections to this petition." Uh, next is a letter from our Finance Department dated April seventeenth and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant, indicating that, uh, they have no objections to the proposal. And a similar, similar letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer dated April nineteenth and signed by Linda Sheel, Treasurer of the City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? Our petitioner is very trailblazing to, uh, have the sign conform to the, uh, ordinance that was just passed last night. That's, that's very quick. I like that. Uh, is there, if there's no questions for our planning staff, I believe our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward to our podium. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, commissioners. Hi, guys, the one.
Good evening, commission.
Sam Hades.
Alex Haddis.
Joe Hades.
The whole team is here.
That's right.
All right, anything, anything else that you'd like to, uh, add from what you've already heard tonight?
Not at all. We just, uh, we're looking forward to bringing this project to the co, to the city and, uh, presenting it as a family-oriented, um, and that's about it.
Okay.
Any comments?
No. Looking forward to working. Hopefully, we hire about forty, fifty younger kids. I mean, we love to work together, mostly high schoolers, so we're looking forward for it.
All right, excellent. Let's see if we have any questions, uh, for you from any of our commissioners. Anyone have a question for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Cara Magno?
Tell me, tell me about the spoon on the side of the building. What is, what is that?
So you can eat out of it? No, I'm just kidding. It's, it's just the signature that the new model Dairy Queen came out in two thousand nineteen, I believe.
Is it, is it, uh, the pictures, is it painted on the wall? Is there actual spoon?
It's an actual spoon. It's, uh, like, six foot high.
Yeah.
Six foot high?
At least, it's more six.
It's about ten.
Yeah, it's about four feet, actually.
And we have in our current locations Taylor and Monroe, and it's crazy how many people love it and love to take pictures with it, and it's like they come to this location just for the picture with the spoon.
I hope they buy ice cream or hamburger when they come in too.
You want to hold their Blizzard upside down and...
What's it made out of?
Uh, foam.
Foam, and there's a protection layer on, uh, like, plastic protection layer from the outside.
Does, does it become damaged?
No.
It cost, it does cost, arm and a leg.
Costs an arm and a leg?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Made out of foam. When you come, when we open, you can take a picture with it. No worries.
I'll be there, I'll be there.
Mr. Toramina, I believe the location on Plymouth Road, which is a different owner, I believe that has the spoon as well. Is that correct?
You know, I was just wondering the same thing.
Yeah, I, I can't remember if that was...
They do. They do. It's, it's a must from corporate.
Okay. All right. We got the spoon issue addressed. Is there any other questions from any of our commissioners? Mr. Ventura?
Can you tell us how soon you'll be open?
How soon? Sooner than the Plymouth one. The sooner council approves this.
Sometimes, sometime this year.
Sure. The plan is to open sometime this year.
When we get possession and start working on the building, it takes about three, four months after. That's how long it usually takes us. So it's all depend on when we start.
Sure. Great. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other, uh, questions for our, uh, petitioner? I believe this is a larger building than the one that's on Plymouth Road. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I believe that's a Core Forty-Six, so it seats less and it's smaller in the back.
Okay, so you'll have a much larger, uh, interior dining area than...
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions from anyone?
I believe the one on Plymouth should be opening in the next month, from now till...
I was just thinking, uh, I think they're opening on the twenty-third, it was, or the eighteenth? One of those, in ten days or so, so...
Yeah, it's, uh, it's on the, the verge of opening soon, I think. All right. Uh, and this is, uh, just, just so you, anyone in our audience understands, uh, you kind of explained this at our study meeting, uh, this is really an initiative by Dairy Queen to, to grow as a brand for, uh, as, as a, um, food sales, you know, as a full restaurant, as opposed to just the ice cream service.
Correct. So this is not just ice cream. This is going to be a full menu that Dairy Queen now carries in. Dairy Queen is not, no longer approving any ice cream stores only. They must be the combination of food and treat.
Okay.
That's where they get the word grill and chill from.
Okay.
Grill meaning for the hot and chill, obviously, for the ice cream.
All right. All right, excellent. Uh, if there's no other questions from any of our commissioners, there's no one else in our audience to speak on this item, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to offer a really long approving resolution.
Okay.
That the request to redevelop the restaurant site at one seven two zero zero Middle Belt Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the, the following conditions. One, the architectural site layout identified as sheet number A one dot one dated April twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, as revised, prepared by James E. Wilkerson, AIA, is approved and shall be adhered to. Two, the parking lot shall be repaired, resealed, and restripped as necessary to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department. Parking spaces shall be appropriately sized and marked, including any barrier-free spaces as may be required by the state of Michigan. Three, the landscape plan and plantless identified as sheet number L one dot one dated April twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, as revised, prepared by James E. Wilkerson, AIA, is approved and shall be adhered to. Four, the underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department, and after that, permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Five, all disturbed lawn areas, including road right-of-ways, shall be sodded instead of hydroseeding. Six, the elevation plan identified as sheet number A three dot one dated April twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, as revised, prepared, prepared by James E. Wilkerson, AIA, is approved and shall be adhered to. Seven, all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening compatible with other building exterior materials. Eight, the restaurant's maximum customer seating count shall be ninety-eight. Nine, the three walls of the dumpster enclosure shall be constructed of brick veneer. The, the gates shall be solid steel or durable, long-lasting panel fiberglass. Ten, all light fixtures shall not exceed twenty feet in height and shall be shielded to minimize glare trespassing on adjacent properties and roadways. Eleven, only conforming signage is approved with the petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Twelve, no unshielded LED light band or neon shall be permitted on the site, including the building or around the windows. Thirteen, unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising, such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists, shall be prohibited. Fourteen, that the plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time of application for certificate of occupancy. And fifteen, under section thirteen point one three of the Livonia Vision Twenty One zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for one year only from the date of approval by the city council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Supports?
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Denaro, supported by Mr. Bonjero. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Denaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Cara Magno votes aye. Chair Wolschow?
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to the city council with an approving recommendation. Wish you luck with your project.
Thank you, commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming today.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, yes.
All right, uh, we have one item left on our agenda, Mr. Secretary.
The approval of the minutes of the one thousand one hundred and ninety-eighth public hearing and regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
And, uh, all members were present with the exception of Ms. Denaro and Mr. Cara Magno. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Bonjero. Is there support?
Support.
By Mr. Long. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show, uh, four on that. And, uh, we'll have Ms. Denaro and, uh, Mr. Cara Magno abstain.
Got it.
And that, uh, that gets that taken care of. That takes us to the end of our agenda tonight. Is there any other business to come before the commission? If there is nothing, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
And supported by?
Support.
I got Mr. Long first.
Okay.
All right, so we got the Denaro and Long on, uh, motion to adjourn. Again, if there's no objections, I think we can safely show six. I hear no objections from anyone, so we will have the meeting adjourned tonight at, uh, what time is it? Eight oh six P.M. I'd like to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this, uh, meeting to the community and wish the community a good night. Good night, Livonia.